Boulet is unable to attend this evening, so I'll be doing his invocation for him. Can everybody please stand?
The first Thanksgiving proclamation by George Washington, by the President of the United States of America proclamation, whereas it is the duty of all nations to acknowledge the providence of Almighty God, to obey His will, to be grateful for His benefits, and humbly to implore His protection in favor, and whereas both houses of Congresses have, by their joint committee, requested me to recommend to the people of the United States a day of public Thanksgiving in prayer, to be observed by acknowledging with grateful hearts the many single favors of Almighty God, especially by affording them an opportunity peaceably to establish a form of government for their safety and happiness. Now therefore, I do recommend on a signed Thursday, the 26th day of November next, to be devoted by the people of these states to the service of the great and glorious being who is the beneficent author of all good that was, that is, or that will be, that we may then all unite in rendering unto Him our sincere and humble thanks, for His kind care and protection of the people of this country previous to their becoming a nation, for the single and manifold mercies and the favorable interpositions of His providence, which we experienced in the course and conclusion of the late war, for the great degree of tranquility, union, and plenty which we have since enjoyed, for the peaceable and rational matter in which we have been enabled to establish constitutions of government for our safety and happiness, and particularly the national one now lately instituted, for the civil and religious liberty with which we are blessed, and the means we have of acquiring and diffusing useful knowledge, and in general for all the great and various favors for which He hath been pleased to confer upon us, and also that we may unite in most humbly offering our prayers and supplications to the great Lord and ruler of nations and beseech Him to pardon our national and other transgressions, to enable us all, whether in public or private stations, to perform our several and relative duties properly and punctually, to render our national government a blessing to all people, by constantly being a government of wise, just, and constitutional laws, discreetly and faithfully executed and obeyed, to protect and guide all sovereigns and nations, especially those who have shown us kindness, and to bless them with good government, peace, and concord, to promote the knowledge and practice of true religion and virtue, and to increase the science among them and us, and generally to grant unto all mankind such a degree of temporal prosperity as He alone knows to be best. Given under my hand, the City of New York, the third day of October in the year of our Lord, 1789, George Washington.
Pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fire evacuation. In the case of emergency, there are exits loaded, gated to the rear of the chambers, and to my left, down the stairs, and out to the parking lot. Ms. Luki, roll call, please.
Mr. Genitis?
Here.
Mrs. Unkire?
Here.
Mr. Warwer?
Here.
Mr. Grady?
Here.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Here.
Mr. Neville?
Here.
Mrs. Thurston? Chairman Neville? Oh, excuse me, Chairman Serrard, sorry.
Here?
Enfield High Student Rep Christine Lusick. Fermi Student Rep Katie Saltskiver?
Here.
Do we have any board guests?
Not this evening, no.
Okay. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item is the Student Representatives' Report. There is some information in your packet, and both our representatives are here to add to that, so I'll let the chair decide which school we'll start at.
Why don't we start with him?
A few weeks ago, on November 14th, Fermi hosted delegates from South Korea from noon to 3:00 p.m. They saw presentations by students on various clubs and activities. They learned what it meant to be a Fermi student from them, and they learned about the ECE program and Project Lead the Way. They toured various art, science, and math classes, and they saw performances by the jazz band and the robotics robot, and they learned about the Friends of Rachel Club after school. It was a really interesting day. That weekend, November 16th to 17th, the Fermi Lamp Lighters performed their show of Locomotion, Commotion, Dr. Gorilla, and Me, and as always, they did a stellar job. Last week was very busy. On Wednesday, six students spoke about team leadership and the power of creating positive relationships with teachers, an audience of 40 superintendents, principals, and teachers at an event in Boxborough, Massachusetts. On Thursday, that Thursday, last Thursday, six Fermi athletes attended the CIAC Sportsmanship Conference, along with 300 other students from around Connecticut, at the Aqua Turf Club, and these students are going to be speakers at this winter and spring sports nights. On Friday, a number of our students participated in statewide leadership seminars. Some went to a half-day conference sponsored by CAS at the Waterbury Arts Magnet School, and others went to an overnight conference, which lasted from Friday to Saturday, and two students who serve on the CAS State Youth Advisory Board were actually featured speakers at both events. And finally, coming up is Fermi Safe Grad Auction, and that will be held on Friday, December 6th, at 6:00 at the Elks Club, and tickets are $5. Finally, Friends of Rachel Club will again be sponsoring the Day of Kindness and Caring this year on December 21st. It will start with a pancake breakfast from 8:00 to 11:00 a.m. at St. Patrick's Church, and donations of food and cash will be accepted, and will support the Enfield Food Shelf, Loaves and Fishes, and Little Sisters of the Poor. And finally, I hope everyone has a nice, happy, and safe Thanksgiving.
November 16th, Drama Club had their craft fair in the library, and they doubled their fund, and they are almost to their desired budget for the upcoming show that will be on December 6th. It's called What a Life. The band had their Take Back the Field last Friday. Yeah, it was very good, and it was the first time, and I think it was five years, that the band has played during halftime on the field rather than the cheerleaders performing. Senior Night for football was last Thursday, which was very exciting, and today, the seniors, for their senior dues and everything, had a duct tape fundraiser where you pay and you get strips of duct tape, and you duct tape a teacher to the wall. And that's all I have, so.
The next item is the Special Board of Education Workshop. In your packet, we had placed December 3rd as a tentative date, as a date that we had reached out to Mr. Thomas Mooney from Shipman and Goodwin to facilitate that meeting for us, so we could hold that date, and we looked at a draft agenda of what might take place during that meeting at the Executive Committee prior to this meeting earlier this evening. The Executive Committee has asked that the administration look into a new date, and that new date is Saturday, January 11th, 2014. So we will be reaching out to Mr. Mooney in the morning. We have sent him an email to see if he's still available for that morning, and we would look to move the Board of Education Workshop to January 11th, 2014, provided we can obtain the services of Mr. Mooney or someone of his stature from Shipman and Goodwin. So we will be updating you on that as we get more information. The Grants Update and Personnel Report is in your packet, and there are two additional items I'd like to add. First of all, Mr. Warwer had called, sent an email asking about some enrollment data, and we had provided that data for the board on October 24th in a memo, but we've added the actual enrollment sheets to this memo, so I'm going to pass these, if Katie would be good enough to pass them over to the board members for us, and I believe that will give the information that Mr. Warwer was looking for, as well as provide some new information for the new board members, and for anyone who has seen the memo before, we'll just bring that up to date for you. And finally, Thanksgiving break begins tomorrow with schools in half-day session, and the schools will be in recess until Monday morning, December 2nd. It will be off Thursday, Friday, and of course, the weekend. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Schuman. Do we have any audiences?
Yes.
Christine?
Christine Yuhasz, yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tina. Good evening. I just wanted to give you a quick update that the junior robotics teams performed very well this past Saturday at the Suffield Competition. I was thrilled to see that JFK put a team together, and they went out there and competed on Saturday as well. I brought some pictures, because I think a picture is worth a million words, and if you'd like, I can pass them around to you. I have a couple of copies. Actually, just have two pages. The first page is the JFK team, and you can see their advisors, Mr. Mitchell and Mr. Fix, in some of those pictures, working with the kids. I think my favorite one is the top left with their faces and their eyes and their hands and their head, and they just look so enthusiastic and so intense on what they are doing. And the second page is the St. Bernard's team. They actually had two teams. They have the St. Bernard's Superheroes, so you see the capes, and they had the St. Bernard's Swagginators, so you can see those in the pink t-shirts. And I think you'll see a little-known guy in the bottom left-hand corner of the St. Bernard's page. Anybody recognize him? Yeah. Yeah. He has a daughter, I think, on the St. Bernard's team, Mr. Lee, so he was there taking pictures and videoing and everything. I don't, I was not able to stay for the whole event. I was really just there for about an hour and a half, got a couple of pictures, saw each team perform. I videoed a little bit for each of the teams, and I'm getting those pictures and videos back to the respective teams, but they did a great job. And another one of my favorite pictures there is actually a JFK picture with the St. Bernard's team behind them, cheering for them, screaming and cheering, and giving them so much positive energy. So I think all in all, you can speak with the teachers that were there. I believe they had a really good time. I think it was a very positive experience, and I just wanted to let you all know about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Unfinished business. Continue the discussion regarding the use of the Enrico Fermi Building. Was there, is this a continuation of a motion, or is this just a, do we need a motion to discuss this?
No, it was just a discussion. There was no extra motion.
And the floor is open for a discussion on?
It was tabled, I believe, at the last meeting, if I read the minutes correctly.
The board did table, it really tabled something that wasn't ever on the table. There was never a motion at the last, I don't believe there was a motion to either use Fermi or move Fermi, so I'm not sure what was tabled. I think we just ended the discussion.
Okay. I just, I was reading the minutes from last meeting.
Yeah, it did say table. You're actually correct, Mr. Neville, but I don't believe there was ever a motion on the table.
Then the floor is open to board members who are discussing the, continue the discussion regarding the use of Enrico Fermi Building. Mr. Genitis?
Okay, this is getting like singing to the choir now, but I will bring up to three things that I have been bringing up for months. The fact that we can take Enrico Fermi, I'd like to see it stay as a school of some sort. Moving the 7th and 8th grade from JFK over there. Establishing a vocational ed program over there for kids who really don't have the desire to go on to college of some choice, but would rather learn a trade and be able to get a job upon completion of high school. And also, an alternative ed program, again, for kids who are troubled or have troubles in school, and school just isn't their bag, and we could probably tailor a program to meet their needs. Now, you could possibly put all three of these things in Enrico Fermi at one time. You could put the voc ed program and alternative school in there by itself and just leave JFK alone, or you could just bring over the 7th and 8th grade. If you did certain combinations of these, you could still, there'd be still plenty of room for a neighborhood center or, I forgot the term that was being bantered before. Community center. There'd still be room for a community center there. The library's big enough where you still could use as an annex to the present-day library that we have over on Middle Road. I would greatly, I would really like to see this board form some sort of a committee with citizen participation to work and do some research on this. There are things that have to be done to the school to make it compliant. I've sat and talked with the principal on some of those issues. I don't know what else has to be done, but it would require some money to convert it into any one of these three things. Another thing that I think we have to keep in mind, too, and again, a reason for having a joint committee of the Board of Ed and citizens of the town, one thing that nobody's talking about is Stowe is going to be coming online before Fermi ever comes up. That Safety Academy will be moving in. I don't know if it's going to be next, I think it's going to be next year, or in the middle of the next year. But Stowe is going to be coming online, I think, for some sort of educational use also, which again, could take any one of those three things, the middle school or part of the middle school, a middle school grade, a voc ed program, or probably not a voc ed program, but an alternative ed program to be used in Stowe. We have to figure out what's going to be done at Stowe also. And there's also some really nice trailers over there that I've been made aware of that we're, we may be trying to get our hands on. That's it.
Mr. Neville, and then Mr. Grady?
I agree with Peter. We have to have a thorough discussion of this, and I think it's coming down to really determine the number of questions that we have to ask about it. I mean, we've been asked by the town to decide if we want to continue holding on to it as a school or not, or whether we want to turn it back over to them, and they're looking for a decision sometime this semester, I believe. But I think, in the discussion that I've heard, it's developed into, I don't want to have this be pejorative, but an emotional and an opinion discussion. I'd like to have it there for these reasons. I like to have it there, but nobody's really raising the questions of, is it suitable? Would there be a cost to it? How soon could it be? And so on. And I think this, you know, I think the discussion has to be had and open, and that's why we were talking about table before, because we knew we didn't have time before the election. We didn't think it was suitable to try to rush it through. So I guess what I'd like to do is make it, make this discussion, and maybe an ongoing one, make it as factual as possible, and I think the only way to do that is pose through the chair to the superintendent the questions that we'd like to get answered. And I think if we did this at each of our meetings, we'd start building a document of the questions that people are raising to us, and I'd like to make some suggestions, and I'll be happy to pass my notes on to the chair.
Absolutely.
And I'll send them electronically, and you can do with them, pass them out, do whatever you want, or send them out to the board, whatever you like. First of all, debt, and debt has to do with Stowe and all these other buildings as well. What is the current debt? What do we owe on these buildings? And when is it going to be paid off? How many years are left on each of the buildings? Because certainly, that was one of the questions that had come up when they're talking about Fermi and JFK. My understanding is Fermi's paid for. JFK is not, and neither is Stowe. I believe there's probably quite a bit of money left on that. The OCR concerns with Fermi and other buildings. Can we get a report? We've all heard about the report, heard all kinds of things in the report, but can we get a copy of the report? Does it detail how much time we have to fix it? Because I think Dr. Schuman sent a letter telling them that the, basically have them back off because we had passed a referendum for the high school. Have any cost estimates been done to fix what we've been cited on? I know we were cited on the auditorium, and there were some other things, too, maybe in the elevator, it was a number of things, but I haven't seen the report, and I'd like to see that. What needs to be done? Will it require a referendum? Depending on the cost, it could very well require a referendum. How many years will it take before it can be used? If we vacate Fermi to go to, when the new school's open, will it need a referendum? And how many years will it take? And how much money will it take to get it done so it can be used by students? How much will the state pay percentage for doing? My understanding, and I could be wrong, but I'd like to get a definitive answer. Some of the stuff that's put out for Fermi to be done is repairs and maintenance, and some of the stuff, when you do a school anew, and you know this as well as anybody, there's a different and higher payback rate that we get. Other question that certainly concerns me, and I think it concerns Peter, can Fermi be adapted to a middle school structure, i.e., house-team structure, as well as meet the developmental needs of middle school age youngsters? Can Fermi be used as a middle school as soon as the new high school opens? What renovations need to be done before it's used to make it a middle school? Not just fix the auditorium, but to make it fit the middle school structure. If we're making a 21st century high school, are we doing something similar for the middle school? We're not just moving classrooms. You know, we need to be making it better and make it meet the needs of our middle school youngsters to the 21st century. Can the high school-style Silence Wing handle the middle school science curriculum? We had a big deal when we were at Kennedy redoing the science to make them fit there. It's set up as a high school science structure, and the location is one thing, but setting up for a regular daily use by most of the classes, I think, will take some funding at the very least. If not, what would be the cost to make it fit, and how long will it take to do it? Can the current middle school schedule and structure be running at Fermi? I don't know whether or not, but I think it's a question you'd have to ask the staff. Another one that I just thought of, as I rode by JFK today, what do you do with 27 buses? Where do you park them to pick up the kids and drop them off? They don't have that many buses at Fermi, and you know, they have more, more kids drive and so on. And I think one thing that we have to look at is that they're going to be accredited again. I think we postponed the accreditation when the new principal came in until 2015, if I'm not mistaken. Will there be any impact on the NESA accreditation? Because certainly, the form and structure of the building play into that. So those are kind of some rough questions. I'm not looking to say it's one way or the other. I certainly probably have a prejudice about it, because I worked there for so long, but I actually worked at both buildings. What I'd like to do is have some of these questions serve as a basis, and I'd like other board members and the public to give us other questions that need answered, but it needs to be based on factual stuff, not my opinion, not my emotion, because my kids all went to Fermi, but I think it needs to be based on what, whether it meets the needs, so. Long and long, but that's what I have to say about it.
Very good, Mr. Neville. Mr. Grady?
I guess a couple of other questions I'd like to maybe piggyback on Mr. Neville's concerns over there is, can we find out somehow what the need is for the vocational part in our school system? Not saying it's not needed. I think we do need a vocational part in our, in our school system. It's just how many kids would be interested, and I mean, I would think that we would maybe start the middle school and maybe get the interest there and work it on up. And also, the adult ed, how many kids we would have for that also, and what kind of room that we're looking for to have a program like that, if we, if we can afford to do so. But I think those two more, two more questions that we can add to your questions, Mr. Neville, and on everything, so if there's somehow we can find out that information, too.
Mr. Genitis?
A couple more comments. I think we have, what, about, Dr. Schuman, approximately 80% of kids in town go on to secondary education? Junior colleges, colleges? Is it that high now? Or is it still in the 70s? I think the high mark used to be 84 a long time ago. So let's, let's use 75 to 80%. That still means somewhere between 20 and 25% are not going on to school. So you can get a rough guesstimate right there about how many kids that would, it would be needed for. I think the other thing that we have to take into consideration, too, and I'll direct the question to Tina, the new high school is going to be built for approximately 17-plus? Okay, now, if we're having graduation classes right now between the two high schools of, what, 250 and 200, so that's about 450, 900, that's almost 1,800 kids that we're going to be putting into a school, a brand-new 21st century school, that's going to start off almost overcrowded. It's going to be very close to it. Go ahead.
The enrollment projection is projected to go down by the time the school opens. So they base the enrollment off of what it was last spring, which was right before they went and applied for the referendum, or to apply for the grants, the reimbursement, I should say, was around 1,600, 1,700, and then they're expecting it to be even less by the time the school opens, which is like 1,500. Because some of the concern that people had was, we were going to build this school, and then if there was an influx of families and more residents.
Which would happen.
Right, absolutely. Would it be able to accommodate? And they're saying yes.
Okay, well, I guess the point I'm trying to make is, it's going to be close to capacity. It won't be, I don't think it's going to put us in this, this safe region of something that could happen 10 years from now. And then what do we do? And when I'm talking about a voc ed program, too, everybody that's not going to college isn't going to want to opt into a voc ed program, but if it was, were just for 150 kids or something like that, you're, A, you're helping the kids, and you will be alleviating a little more room at Enfield High School. And who knows? It could grow into something, and we could possibly even make some money off of it with surrounding towns. They could build the renovations. And the other thing, the comments that Mr. Neville made, valid as they are, the one thing that I don't want to see happen, though, is have this thing drag on. I mean, let's get those questions answered, and a lot of other questions, and do it in a timely manner, because if it does drag on and repairs are not made, and most of the repairs, I think, are ADA repairs that have to be made. The school is still functioning as a school, and it will continue to function for another few years. That does not prevent the town from going in there and making some of the, some of the repairs that, that have to be made or that they can be made. So it is functioning as a school. And as far as, is it going to be middle school compliant or set up for that way? You got a classroom, four walls, teachers will teach, and kids will learn.
Is there anyone else? Mr. Warwer?
It's important that we have public input on this process, as I've noticed with some other issues in the past year. So we definitely need to have, we need to recruit citizens who are interested to get their input, in addition to all the research that I believe, and I wrote it down as research, that the superintendent's office can provide for us, all the questions that are listed. But, but I would, I would certainly like to see the public engaged. When the public's engaged, we get a better product. The public was engaged on the genesis of the 21st century high school. We're going to get a great product, and I believe the public needs to be engaged on the Fermi and Stowe buildings.
Mr. Neville?
I agree with you, Mr. Warwer. I'm, I'm just looking to have that public conversation start, as it did for the high school here, and I think, and Peter, I want to have it happen. I mean, we have, this time of year, we're all here, we're all interested in it. Every meeting, if we can have it on the agenda and just keep the discussion going, and we'll all learn. The public will learn because they're listening here, they can come and speak to it, because, you know, we have any audiences here. Let's get that preliminary discussion here and get the facts out. Okay? The facts are going to determine this, and frankly, I think money's going to determine this, unfortunately, as it would with the, when we, we started the, the program at Kennedy and at the high school, Peter, that took us three or four years to get that started, to get the message out, and get the board and the council in favor of doing it, okay? And we had a very, very good program going. Unfortunately, you know, budget times came and it was cut. So I mean, I think you have to start here. I think the board table is a perfect place for it. I think as we get information out there, we know we have a good audience on TV, ETV, and, you know, they, they'll get to us, they can come here and speak, and we'll get that out there, and I think that will help flesh out the problem. Then at that point, we decide to set up a, a committee because we see, we can raise the question of what we want answered, then I think that'd be the time to do it.
Mr. Genitis?
Then I would ask this board, through the chairman, to the superintendent of schools, to put this on the agenda again for next meeting, for an update as to what has been done in the research to try to get this question about Fermi going.
Dr. Schuman, could we make this a fairly permanent discussion until it's resolved?
Absolutely.
I also have another question. I do realize that if we were to establish a subcommittee, if it was a permanent standing subcommittee, that would take a policy change. If we just set up a temporary subcommittee, would that require a policy change?
No, you have the authority to set up temporary committees as you need.
Okay. Ms. LeBlanc?
This is for Peter. If you look, we just got the request for enrollment packet. There's about 50 kids on average every year that we send to Cheney Tech, yeah.
They're the ones willing to get up at that hour.
Well, yeah, I mean, but there is a limit also, right? How many, how many seats we actually have there? Just like Suffield, OAG and all that stuff?
There is, yeah.
Yeah, I believe that there is, yeah.
They've gone very selective, and we've always had more applications than we had people go.
Are there any more comments on this matter? Very well, moving on. New business, approved Safe Grad donations. Dr. Schuman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet, there is a memo discussing the board's prior contributions to the Safe Grad. Grad committees at both high schools. In the past, the board has donated $500 to each committee. Therefore, the board, if it chooses, may take action this evening to authorize the distribution of those funds to each Safe Grad committee.
Do I have a motion to?
So moved.
We have to be specific.
To donate $500 to each of the high schools, Fermi High School and Enfield High School for safe graduation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Floor is open for discussion. Are there any comments? Is this a roll call vote? We're going to have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Genitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Ungeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Mr. Grady?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Neville?
Yes.
Mrs. Thurston?
Yes.
Chairman Serrard?
Yes. That was easy. Item B under new business is the policy revision number 9133, standing committees and of the board, first reading to reestablish the policy committee. Dr. Schuman?
Yes, there is a memo in your packet that alters and changes and gives you the first reading and shows you how policy 9133 would be revised to reestablish the policy standing committee.
This is considered a first reading, so there's a second reading before it becomes official. This was a, a topic that was discussed by members of the Board of Education to bring policy back into the hands of the Board of Education. If there are any questions, please feel free. Mr. Neville?
I just, you know, I don't care where it goes, you know, policy is policy, you have to deal with it. I would just recommend that whichever group, if it's curriculum, if it's student services or whatever, if the policy applies to that, then I think the chair of that committee or any members should be invited to the meeting where they discuss and, and develop the policy.
Absolutely. Any other comments?
I think in the past, the way it usually was used was the committee, if they wanted a change in policy, would approach the policy committee and they would naturally work together. That's the way it'd been in the previous years.
I think at times the policies were just, they were identified by the, the policy committee as needing it and they'd come up with a draft. I would just say before you come up with a draft, bring the people who it applies to, curriculum or student service or whatever, just bring them to the meeting. That's all, so they have some input. They, they have a knowledge base about why we would need a policy anyway. I think they would help out.
Any other comments? Mr. Waller?
It's good that we focus and centralize comprehensive discussion on policies as opposed to dispersing them.
Any other comments?
Need a second?
I already did.
You have to move, you have to move it as a first reading, huh?
Wait, I, do I have a motion as a first reading?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Grady, seconded by Mr. Waller.
Ready? Mr. Genitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Ungeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Mr. Grady?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Neville?
Yes.
Mrs. Thurston?
Yes.
Chairman Serrard?
Yes. Item 10C, policy revision number 9368, order of business and Board of Education meeting conduct, first reading. Dr. Schuman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet, you have information regarding policy 9368, order of business and Board of Education meeting conduct. The policy revised proposal is to move board member comments up in the agenda and to add a second opportunity for audiences to address the board. And that information is provided for you in the first reading in your packet.
All right, I'm going to take a chairman's prerogative on this one. One of the things that we learned when we were campaigning and we were talking to the public was, and the importance of public input. One of the complaints we heard was when the audiences where had been, or when the board member comments had been moved to the end of the meeting, a lot of the comments weren't being addressed. And we're, we're bringing this in line, the policy in line, more to be that, along the lines of the town council, because we do want public input. So we'll have two sessions of audiences, one at the beginning of the meeting and one at the end of the meeting, in case you missed the first period. This will also give it an opportunity for the board members to address specific concerns as they are being brought up in the first period of audiences. That's the purpose behind the revision. I think we should need more public input. As I said earlier, when I took, when I took the chairman's seat, it was important for all of us to improve the communication between the public, because without the public, nothing that we do here makes sense to them. And that's, again, another stride in that positive direction to increase, to increase public input, so. Any, any other comments? Mr. Genitis?
So what you're proposing is, audience comes up and speaks, then we respond?
And you have the board member comments?
And then the audience has a second chance to come up.
Right. Any other?
I think I have a little trouble with the second audience one. I think what I would like to see is a second board one. In other words, audience comes up, particularly if it's a, it's an issue or a topic where we're packing the house. I don't know if you want to, well, it could get pretty filled up if, if you had a second one. But if everybody came up and, and said what they wanted to say, and once the initial round of audience participation was completed, anybody in the audience who wanted to speak a second time, I would let them come up and speak a second time during the audience participation. And then I'd like to see board comments immediately after audience participation on things that the audience spoke of. And then have a second board comments towards the end that didn't deal with that, but other things that might be on our mind. In other words, the audience is getting a chance, a complete chance to speak once. A second time, if something pops in their head, once everybody who signed up has spoken, they will hear us respond to their questions immediately during the first board comments session. And then on the second board comment session later on in the meeting, anything else that we want to talk about, we would talk about. I'd rather see it structured that way.
Mr. Neville?
I don't have a problem with having two, two audience, I'd find it, it's not an issue. I, I, just the way it was phrased here in terms of the board comments, that we respond to the public, we don't respond, I, I, just the way it was phrased, I don't know what that sort of is meant, that's not how it's defined in the documents that we got from Dr. Schuman. And I, I just think it's something that I urge caution on because we're only a board that can take action as an entire board, not as individuals. And I think there's some topics that come up that we may not know about and then we defer them to the superintendent. So I, I would be a little cautious in that. Audience participation, that's fine. I would just encourage more people to come to the meetings. People tell me all the time that they're, they're watching it on TV, that they can't ask a question or speak to us there. We'd like them to, if they could come here and they have an issue, bring it here or email us, whatever, and we can respond to that as well in our comments and, and bring their question up.
To address a couple of the concerns that I've heard, board member comments, traditionally they're whatever the board member decides he wants to use it for, or he or she wants to use it for. So if you wish to, if you choose to address a comment that's brought up by the audience, then you can do so. If you choose to talk about the events in this town, you can also do that as well. And as far as extending to a second round, I believe that it already exists in, for, we've done it in the past where we've actually had, you know, because we have a time limit as to what public can speak, we can already do that. The, the, the reason that I saw for the, to facilitate the change was to provide a second slate so that people who could not make it for the first slate had the opportunity to address the board. Again, this is, this brings us more in line with what the town council does and allows us to, to have that additional level of input. So as far as, you know, what the board, what a board member chooses to use their time for is what they choose to use their time for. They have the freedom to do whatever they choose. That's one of the privileges of being on the board and that's why it's, it's there. I thought that one of the things that I noticed in the, in my first term was that there were certain times when you had to address something immediately. And I noticed that it tends to bog the meeting down significantly when you're discussing out of order, something that was brought up in an audience conversation. This more formalizes it, but at the same time allows a free flow of, an exchange of ideas if a board member chooses. It's not to facilitate an argument, it's more to facilitate input from the public. So with regards to Mr. Genitis's comment about having an opportunity to provide a second, a second wave of audiences, we've already have that power. It's already there. We can for certain issues and we've done it in the past and it's already there, so I don't see the, the need. And as far as back and forth with the audience, that's not what, what it's, the board member, each board member has a choice. They can use that time for whatever they choose. And I think the reason that you put it there is so that we, we can address those that do take the time to come here and, and it's not at the end of the meeting. That's the only, the reason I was, I was understood, the reason that we, the suggestion was made that we do this was so that would facilitate that, so that they don't have to stay here for the entire meeting and they can get their point across. That's the only reason for the changes. I think we meet everybody's concerns with the first reading as is.
Tom? I'll go either way.
Mr. Genitis?
Okay. Hence, the reason that I'm suggesting that the board comments, the first board comments coming after the audience speaks, is say, say we're talking about the colors of Enfield High School and that was a little hot for a while, but all of a sudden now it's board comments and it's my turn to talk and I want to beat Fermi to death. I don't think that's the time to do it because the people are here for, for something else. They're here for the colors. And it's what they say that they want to hear us respond to. I'm not saying have an open dialogue back and forth. Let everybody come up and talk. We sit there and take our, we sit there and take our notes and then when it comes our time, okay, speaker number four said such and such, and this is my answer to that particular topic. In other words, you keep it on topic of what the audience had to say, not what our personal preferences are on a different issue. That's not when it should come up. Later on in the meeting, if we were always talking about the colors earlier, now if I want to start ranting and raving on the uses of Fermi High School, that's when it should be brought up. Or somebody else wants to bring what, what, what we're going to be doing with part of the construction or something at Enfield High School, that's when it should be brought up, not immediately after the audience participated.
I, I'm just confused because I think the way you just described it is the way it's in the draft, if I'm not mistaken. It's audiences and then it's, it's board comments immediately after. It's exactly what you asked for, Peter.
But he also said a second round of audiences.
Yeah, he, that was, the first thing was to butt them up together and the next one was to have the audience 16 or 17, I think, if I read it correctly.
It's later in the meeting and it's, again, to afford people who, who missed the opportunity the first time around in the meeting, who get here late. There's been many occasions where, and it also brings us more in line with what the town council is doing.
But you also, you also made the comment that it's the board's members prerogative to speak on whatever they want. What I'm saying, the differentiation is whatever was brought up by the audience, it has to be within that framework of what we're responding to during the first time, not the second time.
I just think one of the other reasons to add into the second audience is people sit through the meeting, we go through a topic that, that they heard the discussion from us on and they like to add in their comments on it. I thought that that was one of the additional reasons to have the, the second audience.
Yes, that is also another reason for the second audience. Thanks for bringing that up. Do I have a motion to approve this as a first, or do we need to?
Motion to accept.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Kathy?
Mr. Genitis?
The way it was read, no.
Mrs. Ungeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Mr. Grady?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Neville?
Yes.
Mrs. Thurston?
Yes.
Chairman Serrard?
Yes. Board committee reports. Do we have any board committee reports? I'm going to take that as a no. Board member comments, start with Mr. Genitis.
I've got a few things, things that are going on inside the schools. It appears that at some of the schools, we're starting to have difficulties with coverage again. I really, I never liked it as a teacher and I still don't like it as a board member. For instance, say at JFK, when the reading teachers were being called over to do curriculum work or, or workshops or something like that during the middle of the day, people were getting coverage two, three times a week at the school. That is not an emergency. If you're going to do that, then have them take a half a day off and have a sub come in for a half a day. But I really do think calling teachers out of their classes to go someplace and work on something else for three or four days is, is not right to the other teachers. Apparently there are some schools that have had a shortage of subs. I know for one particular day, there were 10 teachers out, only two subs were called in. And I would question the administration to find out, are we having difficulties getting substitutes now? I understand a workshop was presented at JFK on computers and at some point, the computers all failed. I asked Ann McCuren for the results of the magnet school test scores at the last board meeting and I still haven't heard anything from her and I would like to get those test scores. And last but not least, I wish there was some way we could communicate with the grounds crews not to be cutting grass and doing major work underneath the windows of classes that are in session. While the school is in session, go do your, your yard work or grounds work anywhere else but around the school. Maybe if you got to get in there real quick during lunchtime, that's one thing. But please respect the teaching time and, and teaching that is attempting to be done in the classrooms when those mowers and things get going. You've heard them, haven't you? And so have you. It's, it really is a distraction. And as a former teacher, when it used to happen, you'd just sit there for a while until the mowers are gone. But sometimes, depending on the, the structure of the school, the mowers can stay in there for a lengthy period of time. So if there's some way we can contact the grounds crew to better organize what they're doing, particularly as they get closer and closer to the windows of the schools. Thank you.
Mrs. Ungeyer?
I have no comments at this time.
Mr. Waller?
Just a couple of items. I, I would like to, to ask through the chair, superintendent, through the chair, to, to, whether it's through the HR director or, or the like, to, to determine the potential impact of, of the Affordable Care Act on our school district's health benefits. The Internal Revenue Service has deemed that this, the law extends the employer mandate to state and local governments. There are lawsuits out there in, in the state of Indiana on this, but you know, if it apply, if the Internal Revenue Service has made that determination, I would, I would ask that, you know, we take a look, especially as it affects future contracts and future budgets for, for the district. Second item, I was, had the opportunity, I was invited by folks at Henry Barnard School to attend a, an assembly as part of my orientation to the, to the school department, school, school activities this afternoon. I want to commend Mr. Higgins and Mrs. Smith, two wonderful teachers whose level of enthusiasm was, was extremely high for 1:30 in the afternoon. And, and I was able to learn a bit about the progress of students at, in the elementary grades, and this is a K through two school, I believe. It was, it was, it was very moving. Kids were very well disciplined and they, and they reacted on cue to their, their, the coordinators of the Masters of Ceremony. It was a fun time. It lasted about an hour and I believe that, that this is done on a monthly basis, but what I would have liked to, what I learned from this, besides about all the things that the children have learned in math and, and reading, is that here's a program that not all parents can attend because it's hard, many people work between eight and five or nine and six or 12 and eight. So, and this was 1:30 in the afternoon, and there were parents there, but not all parents. And, and it is a regular event at Henry Barnard, I was told. I would like the, the superintendent to, to perhaps communicate with, with our friends at ETV because they do televise the board meetings. And this is a kind of event that if ETV staff was there with their portable cameras, they could have televised it and put it up on YouTube and the parents that were not able to able to attend today could see their children in action. So that's my first request. And then, because I don't know enough of what goes on in the other schools in the elementary level, I suspect other events are like this. As I begin to acclimate myself more to the various events in the elementary schools, I would suspect that there are other similar events like this, that ETV could perhaps from time to time, you know, tape and then televise for the benefit of the parents. Thank you.
Mr. Grady?
Well, I think it was last week, first readers last week? We could, getting old, forget. But I was able to attend the ceremony last week at the first readers ceremony. A little bit smaller group, but still very enthusiastic group. It was great to see the kids getting recognized for reading their first book and a lot of happy faces out there. And I know Dr. Schuman and Mr. Dreszek were there giving out bookmarks and pencils, so it was a very nice night to see that. A couple of things I gotta announce, if you don't mind. At Parkman tomorrow, they'll have a POPS assembly at 9:30. Welcome to attend. And also on December 7th, Saturday, they're also having a fundraiser for their One School, One Book at Barnes and Noble's all day long, from, I believe from 9 to 3:00 or something like that. Also, I was asked to give a little shout out for Crandall, Prudence Crandall. Their PTO and their KC Club, the Kindness and Compassion Club, which is a spinoff from the Rachel's Challenge. They did a duck, a buck for a duck campaign, which is my little duck out here, the little fireman duck, but they had all different kinds of ducks out there. And they raised about $585 for Philippines Relief, which is going to be donated to the Red Cross. They did a great job. They had different types of buzz ducks there. They had unicorn ones, they had secretary ones, they had ones with mustaches, and of course, my favorite, the firemen. They did have police, but who cares? But it was a really good fundraiser, the kids really had a great time doing it. They also, Prudence Crandall is donating 245 pounds of food to the Enfield Food Shelf. So, that's about it.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yep, I have a few things tonight. First of all, the Enfield High girls soccer team actually this week is spending time in the soup kitchen, volunteering some of their time. I would also like to congratulate them. They fell short by one goal in the first round of the playoffs this year to Valley Regional, but they did a great job. It was going into the second overtime and they fell by one, along with the field hockey team. They made it to the first round of playoffs. And if I understand correctly, field hockey, it had been, the last time field hockey had made it, had been quite some time, I want to say in 2007. The Fermi High School and Enfield High Basketball tryouts are this week as well. The JFK School, they had their Turkey Trot yesterday. Also, next month, I got a letter home from Mrs. Collins that the students who did the lap for Nico would like to come to the next board meeting and present. The lap for Nico was done on November 4th in memory of Nico Filippa, and it was quite an emotional day, but it was a wonderful day to see the community involvement. Let me see, oh, on Friday night, Effie had a campout at the library that many people attended, and the children brought their sleeping bags and stories were being read all night, and I heard that it was a wonderful time. Lastly, I just have to give a special shout out to my niece, Jillian Lepanese. She was selected as first team all-state for field hockey from Enrico Fermi High School. She's a goalie, she had 222 saves, and she only let 25 goals in. So I thought that was a really good accomplishment for her. And I would just like to say congratulations, although I've said it a million times, so. And I just hope everybody has a safe and healthy Thanksgiving.
Mr. Neville?
Just a comment on the Walk for Nico. I had the opportunity to attend that, and I was totally impressed with the number of folks who came out. The kids were fabulous. And, you know, the parents were there, and it was just, it was moving and the kids came up with this, I just, you know, just kudos to them. They did a great job. That was just a wonderful thing for them. Secondly, I'm going to agree with Peter, and in terms of the questions that both he and I asked for at the last meeting about CMT scores, I was looking for different subgroups. I believe it was special ed. It's in the minutes, anyway. If we could get some feedback on that, but, you know, at least by the next meeting, that would be great. The other thing that came up at the last, I think it was the last meeting, was the young lady who came up and talked about the fire extinguishers. And I know I've talked to Dr. Schuman about that. It took several weeks to, because there were several times I was in the building and they hadn't left. Are they gone now? And, you know, and do you know why they were never taken?
I do not know why they were not taken. The town manager said he was going to look into getting them removed.
Could you just double check? I hate to be a pain, but, you know, I went in there twice and they were, over the course of three weeks, and the last time we were in there, Vinnie, they were still in the cart.
Yeah. You found out why they were on the cart, right?
No.
Oh, I have the answer if you want.
I'd love an answer.
They are not required by fire code to be in certain areas of the schools. Any high hazard, that's where they're required, but any other place, they don't have to be. So they took the ones that they don't need out of their cabinets and put them on the cart.
My question, I have two questions. One, we have empty fire extinguisher boxes, and if it was a fire and I went to the box that has fire extinguisher above it and it's red and it's glass, there's nothing in it. Secondly, they've been out there since August on a cart. You know, if they're gonna be taken out, take them out.
Yeah.
Okay, and Dr. Schuman's been following through on it. I just couldn't understand why it's taking weeks to do that. On another note, I read that we had gotten the computer grant, and I wondered, through the Chair to the Superintendent, could we get an update on, did we get it and what the status of it is?
I believe that was in your mailbag this past week, was it not?
Yes, it was.
Yeah.
I thought I went through, there were dozens and dozens of pairs, I thought I hit them all, but I'll go back and double check. Thank you. The other one has to do with Buzz Robotics. And again, I talked to the Superintendent yesterday because I had talked to Bob Attia. They were looking to come to a future meeting, and I'd suggested the 10th, and I said, Jesse, call you, Dr. Schuman, to present, give some history to the board in terms of the new board members, particularly about Buzz Robotics, and how it's going. And so I was just hopeful that you could, when Bob contacts you, you could work with the Chair and maybe get a board guest at our meeting. Prior to the season starting, which is, I think it's the, it's in January, which is 4th, okay, coming right up here. Okay, and finally, I just want to wish everybody a safe and happy Thanksgiving. It's come up very, very quickly, so, time is flying by, so be safe, enjoy your families. Thank you.
Mrs. Thurston?
Tom? Tom? Can I say one more thing? I forgot something.
Go ahead.
With the policy committee, I would like the Executive Board to consider bringing back the Personnel Committee also, for two reasons. One, that that would be an ongoing negotiations team, and also that it would also help in the whittling down of candidates who are applying for any position from Vice Principal and up, taking the last six candidates and having the Personnel Committee also go through those, the resumes that are presented.
Okay. First, I want to thank Mr. Grady and Mr. Neville for a very smooth transition. I also want to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving. And moving on. Approval of minutes. As a point of information for the new board members who weren't here, if you weren't at the meeting, you can't vote on the minutes. So, which means there's only four people present that can actually vote on the minutes and the acceptance of the minutes. So yeah, I believe the procedure is to...
No, we have five.
You have five?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So, yes, the procedure for the new board members is if you weren't there, you just abstain. Special meeting minutes on October 22nd, 2013.
Motion to accept.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Oh, aye.
Regular meeting minutes for October 22nd, 2013. Do I have a motion to accept?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, show of hands. Motion passes. Approval of council payrolls. We have none.
I have no correspondence.
No correspondence or communications. Do we have a need for an executive session?
Yes, we do, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a motion to go into exec, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? We're in executive session.
Where are we going?